Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole Monday, January 9th to order in this centennial year 2012. I have one late item, it's not really a late item, but it's not on your agenda, and that is the welcome to Keith Lindner, and I'll just do that right now before I ask for an approval of the agenda. I know many of you have met Inspector Lindner, but I'm pleased to announce that he is the new permanent leader of the Victorian Police Department's West Division in Esquimal. Mr. Lindner is over here. Keith has been with us as the interim leader since November of this year, taking over from retired Inspector Daryl McLean. Congratulations are also in order for Keith, who was promoted from staff sergeant to inspector as part of his new assignment, and I understand that Keith has policed in larger centers, including Victoria and Calgary, and is looking forward to the opportunities and challenges of policing in the smaller communities such as Esquimal. We look forward to working with Keith in his new role. Keith has already established his presence in the township. I have seen him at many events and can see he has a fit into, he will fit into our community very nicely. Keith has worked in a number of different policing roles, including patrol, narcotics, crisis negotiation, and emergency response. Here in Esquimal, he will be commanding eighteen officers and two civilians at the West Division facility. Please join me in welcoming Inspector Keith Lindner to the township of Esquimal. Would you like to say any words at this time?
Just thank you very much. Like I said, Aaron was there earlier this morning. We had a press release where myself and Inspector Grant were introduced to the media, and like I told, rehearsed and others, this community is welcoming with open arms, and we're granted my decisions to try and make my way out here. Happy to be here and hope that I can fulfill everything that you guys need of me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda.
To who?
Second. Thank you. Discussion, being none, all those in favor. Unopposed, motion is carried. Counsel, you have the minutes of the regular committee of the whole December 12th in front of you. I need a motion to adopt those minutes. Second. Thank you. Are there any errors or missions or changes? Being none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? None, motion is carried. We are now moving into the staff reports. We have the administration report on voting on motions. Counsel, there is a recommendation before you, and I'd like to open it up for discussion at this time. This is something that I brought forward because it is, it would expedite things to be able to be very clear as to when you call the question and vote yes, or all those in favor. What happens is sometimes you will see that some of us don't raise our arm, and then there are, then I have to search around and see and then call the question those then not in favor. There is sometimes, it's not clear as to which way somebody has voted. If you do not raise your arm, you are then speaking in favor. However, if you called the question all those opposed, very clearly you would see who has voted for what right off the bat. So Counsel, is there any discussion on what you have in front of you? Counselor Brandt.
I definitely see the benefit of what is posed in that, but I just fear that many people sitting up there won't know why we're not doing before and against, and that's the only thing. And for me, it will be recorded how we voted, but sometimes those in the audience, I feel it might actually work the other way, where they'll get confused if they only see opposed. I could be totally wrong in that, but that's just, just a thought.
Thank you. Counselor Morrison.
I really don't see the complexity here. I think it's pretty simple. We're not a large voting group. It doesn't take a lot of additional time to allow people to vote in opposition officially. I do see in the report that there's going to be a requirement of tax dollars to pay for advertising, to inform the community about this, and staff time to prepare this information for the community. And I really, what's the value? What's the point? I mean, so we can shave off five minutes from our overall...
Counselor, I'm just going to ask you, you're speaking...
Sorry, through the chair, yeah.
To your counsel.
Yeah, rhetorical question through the chair. So, yeah, question to the council. So what is the point? I mean, I, we had a member from the community come speak to us in the earlier part of this meeting and spoke very adamantly about it, but I still don't get the point. I just, I figure this is not a good use of tax dollars, it's not a good use of our staff's precious time, and I think the system works perfectly well. In fact, I think it's preferable as for why Counselor Brandt is mentioning, people get to see how their council voted officially, either for or against. Not a big deal.
Thank you. Counselor Shinby.
Your worship, I was entertaining the idea of passing a motion that this report had been tabled.
Is there a second or two to the motion? I don't see a second. Thank you. Counselor McConaughey.
Thank you, your worship. I'm also agreement with Counselor Brandt that I think people want to see how you're going to vote, and I don't think I need to walk down the street three days later and say, hey, I was at a council meeting and you sat there and you didn't do nothing. Well, I get it, but just the way we're done, now you have to spend the time explaining it, and as Counselor Morrison said, it's a cost to our staff because they're going to have to write it up, and I don't think we need that.
Counselor Huntley, did you ever have it?
I did. Thank you. So I see the benefits of having a change, but I also see the negatives as well. I'm happy with the status quo, so I would be willing to move that council continue to vote on motions in the matters set under the compact procedure by law 2715-2009.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? I certainly don't want to waste any more time on this, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. We now move on to the report on development permits issued by the Director.
Thank you, your worship. I have nothing to add to the staff report.
Thanks very much. Counsel, questions from council. I will ask a question to break the ice.
I'm wondering, in terms of the workload for the Director, how, whether that has created a significant change?
No, your worship, it hasn't. These are relatively straightforward development permits, so the amount of work involved is relatively minor, and it's certainly a lot less than preparing the report and bringing it to council for each one of these.
Great, thanks. And I see that there is, anecdotally, that we're hearing that people are much happier with the length of time of the process, so that's good. That was the reason to bring it back, to get that sense. Counselor Huntley.
Thank you. I always point to moves a recommendation that the Director of Development Services continue to review and issue development permits. Thank you. Projects that follow within the scope of the work. One thing I haven't really sort of given more thought to is, should it come back for review, or are we just satisfied with having it go forward? Frankly, I'm satisfied with having it go forward. Unless there is a problem, I would think we should just continue.
Thank you. Is there a second or two? A second. Thank you. Further discussion? Being none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Those opposed, none, motion is carried unanimously. We have the report on limiting certain types of commercial businesses. Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, your worship. This report came about as a request of the previous council to look at the idea of limiting certain types of businesses. In particular, it was in regard to check cashing and loan till payday type businesses, which we have several of in Esquimal. So we staff looked at several different urban municipalities, and in association with this was the notion of creating more diversity in our commercial core, as well as limiting certain types of businesses. And we found that quite a few businesses in DC, quite a few smaller communities, have taken measures to limit check cashing facilities for a variety of reasons, and they've taken different approaches. Some of them have amended their definition of a financial institution so that check cashing facilities don't qualify. Others have said you can have a check cashing facility, but it has to be in a particular zone, or it has to be in a location where it doesn't have a front in on your major commercial street. And so I included these in the staff report from the various communities of Langley Avenue and a couple of others. And in addition, I also pointed out that Sydney had tried to encourage diversity in their commercial sector by insisting that on their main drag, on the main street, Beacon Avenue, that all of the businesses, even retail or some sort of retail service establishment, and they pivot offices with the exception of real estate offices. And the purpose behind that is so that you have an active street state that's full of active shop runs, that things that people can walk by, they either stop into the shops or they go through the windows. So it creates that kind of old fashioned shopping environment as opposed to going past light walls that are often created when you have offices on your front street.
Thank you. Counsel, before I open it up for discussion, I do want to let you know that it's my understanding that our Chamber of Commerce will be meeting tomorrow night and having a discussion on this, and so it might be valuable in view of that meeting to delay making a decision on this tonight. As well, I received a phone call from the president of the, I'm sorry, I forgot my little piece of paper, but basically he's in charge of Canadian payday loan association, and they would like to come, and cash stores are included in that, and they would like to come to council and give a presentation so that we have some understanding of their business as well prior to making some decisions on this. So there are a couple of groups out there that would be interested in providing us with more information so that we can make this decision with all bits of information. So I'm going to open it up for questions and discussion. Counselor Morrison.
I'll move, just to kick things off, I'll move the recommendation. I also have a second motion that I would like to have separate from that. Exact the process, whether I should raise both motions.
At this time you moved the recommendation, and are you, would you want to include it with your recommendation, or it can be a separate motion?
I'd like it as a separate motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion, would you like to address your motion?
Sure. I want to start off by saying, and I understand the need or the desire by the Esquimal Chamber of Commerce to also have an opportunity to have some input on this, in that this is an issue of our relationship with the business community. The second part, and I understand the mayor's just relaying a message from, I forget the name of the group, payday loan or something, to help us better understand what it is they do. Well, I think we already have a pretty good understanding of what they do and what they've done to our community. And in my mind, in the mind of many people in this community, it's a very negative contribution to our community. I just won't want, I don't think that having a salesperson or a public relations person coming from that organization to tell us all the wonderful things that they're doing, I think is a, is doing disservice to this community, who does know the actual effect, the impact that such types of businesses have on our community. But to get back to my bigger point, I want to be very clear, this is not anti-business. I consider myself to be a very pro-business council member, as do I'm sure all of my colleagues on council. That's actually why we're here. The whole point of what we wanted to achieve this term was to open up Esquimal to better quality businesses, to make Esquimal a better place, a more desirable place to do business, to support our tax base, and to make it a better community for residents to enjoy and to want to live here as well. Again, not mentioning words, I talk to people all the time, I consider myself to be a pretty aggressive ambassador as to all the benefits of living in Esquimal. I'm constantly trying to get people to consider moving here and raising their families here because, as you all know in the audience and everyone in this community, we do have a wonderful community. But for the people outside our community, what they see is what they see when they drive into the community, which is our main street, which is Esquimal Road, which is littered with these types of businesses. These types of businesses do not add value to our community, they devalue our community. And they also, they also act as an anti-incentive for other businesses, better quality businesses, the businesses that we strive so hard to attract into our community, they give them the incentive to stay out of our community.
Counselor, I would like you to...
Through the, through the chair. Okay.
...adgress the court in your recommendation, and it, I'm not, it's not necessarily through the chair.
Sure.
It's the, that committee of the whole, and I'll say this to please all of the council because maybe I didn't give this direction early. When, that committee of the whole, we are discussing amongst ourselves, so when you're addressing, will you please address your fellow council?
Sure. So to the council, and I also want to express this to the concern from the Esquimal Chamber of Commerce wanting us to, well, it's not exactly clear, but there was a request that we delay this issue until after they had a opportunity to have some input. If we truly want success, if we truly want to have, the mayor spoke of her initiative for this council, being Esquimal shines, and as I said earlier, it's a big part of, a big part of, component of that is to bring new businesses into our community, to make our community more economically successful and overall more desirable place to live and raise a mountain. The way that the Esquimal Chamber of Commerce and all businesses in this community are to best succeed, if we provide an environment that makes it more desirable for that to happen. Currently, we are, what I'm hearing ad only from other businesses, is they don't want to locate on Esquimal Road, they don't want to locate in Esquimal because they don't want to be associated with payday loans, stores, cash checking store, businesses that not only cheapen our community, but cheapen any business that locates alongside them or adjacent to them, right? We've had a lot of discussion, just coming through this last election cycle, about what the future of Esquimal can be, and we all agree with the centennial being 2012, that this is the time for us to get serious about reinventing ourselves, rebranding ourselves, not dismissing all the wonderful things that we have because we already know all those things that exist that are so wonderful about Esquimal. But the problem is, people don't see past Esquimal Road. They don't. They don't see our parks and our recreation and all the wonderful people who live in this community do great things to make this place a wonderful place to live. What they see is Esquimal Road. When they see Esquimal Road, they see these types of businesses and the type of clientele that tend to hang around and are gravitating towards these businesses, and that's not a positive future for Esquimal.
Thank you, Counselor.
So the second, do I have this as a second motion? Can I?
And not at this time because we're discussing your first motion. Counselor Brandt.
So I would like to touch on a few points. I've heard, I've actually been quite neutral on this in a lot of aspects because I've heard about the persona that it could show, and then I've also, as a business owner and talking to other businesses, it has been known that if we limit and we push the check cashings downtown, because they will go downtown, is that people will then go downtown and they will spend their money downtown, they will not spend it locally at our businesses. That tends to what happened, they'll cash it, they'll go to the grocery store, they'll go to the local liquor store, they'll go buy some tickets at Parks and Rec and go use the rec facilities. I have some concern with the type of people that use check cashing. I actually know quite a few students who use them, I know quite a few young families that are struggling between paychecks because, you know, God love the banks, they put a hold on your paycheck if you put it in a machine, but your rent is due on Saturday, and if you put your check in on Friday, you don't actually get it into your account until Monday, so they're, you know, so they do have their place, and I, if you drive by, some of the people that you see in that store are quite average jokes, young military, young families. So we have to be careful that we don't paint people that use that in a derogatory manner because many of them are not. Many of them are our residents right here in Esquimal. My one, there's another point is, competition's not necessarily a bad thing. There are great, well, there are good check cashing companies that are very reputable and try to be as fair as they can be, and then there are some that might not be so. So the weak will die off, the strong will survive. If the company is, you know, valuable to our community, it will survive. If it's not, it will not survive. It's simple enough. I'd rather see a nice tidy check cashing place than some of the derelict closed buildings that are, you know, they try to tag graffiti and they sit empty and dirty inside, and that's what you walk by. So those are just other things to keep in mind. Yes, I don't know a lot about the companies, I don't use them, I do know they charge high interest rates, but if you use your visa lately, that's some of the other choices that you're giving these people. If they can't cash their check, they're going to max out their visa and at nineteen percent. God love them, visas just about as inhumane as some of the interest rates charged at the check cashing places and get people into just as much trouble. So I think we need to learn more about it. I think we need to, for the rapport that we have been trying to build with our Esquimal Chamber of Commerce, to ignore their ask for letting them to discuss it and take what they have in mind being the business community and ignoring them and going through with this proposal right now and voting on it without their input, I do not think bodes well for our relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. So I think they need to be listened to, and for due diligence, listening to the check cashing company, I think is really important. So for that reason, I will not be voting in favor of the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you. Counselor McConaughey.
Thank you, your worship. As a long-standing resident of Esquimal, if you stop and look, okay, we have four money marts laid out on Esquimal Road. Three of those stores have been here for years. The businesses around them have not gone, oh, sorry, here are a cash grab or whatever, and I'm out of here. That's not the way it's been. I'm not totally in favor of money marts or cash stores or whatever you want to call them, but they're a business, they're a business that will bring some revenue into this municipality. And I think if we put a bylaw in place saying, sorry, we can only have this many stores in Esquimal, what happens to McDonald's? What happens to McDonald's, wants to put a little one up on Craig Cloud, we're going to say, sorry, we got a bylaw now that says we can only have one in Esquimal? Or are we going to start passing bylaws to say that we can only have so many shoe stores in Esquimal, or we can only have so many banks? I think we're opening a whole can of worms up. If the store's going to make it, it's going to make it on its own criteria. So I don't think we, as counselors, need to be the ones to say whether that store's going to make it or not. So I will be voting against the bylaw.
Counselor Huntley.
Thank you, Chair. I understand the comments, most of the comments made by Counselor Morrison, and I do have reservations myself about having more check cashing facilities in our municipality. However, I've heard a direct request for an opportunity to comment from the Chamber of Commerce, and I, like Counselor Brandt, feel that they need an opportunity to be heard. We've been asking for people to comment and encourage consultation, and now we have an opportunity, and deny that just doesn't seem right. So I don't think there's a problem with a short delay in addressing this, and I don't feel that we need to rush through it. Short delay shouldn't be a problem, so I will vote against.
Thank you. Counselor Hodge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We were elected to make decisions on behalf of those who we represent and make decisions with respect to what's in the best interests of Esquimal and the people of Esquimal for the short, medium, and long term. And some of these decisions are going to be tough decisions, and I for one, understand the need for collaboration and reach out to the community to get good information, but in this particular circumstance, I believe we have that information. I was out campaigning and talked to a lot of people, and this was one of the issues that was discussed at considerable length, and people want to see a different future with respect to some of the businesses. We have five already here, and therefore, and I will vote in support of this motion because I believe it is in the best interest of Esquimal and the people of Esquimal long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shinby.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to council. I won't be supporting this motion. I do firmly believe that the market, market economics will dictate whether that new business will stay in business or not. If it becomes number six and it puts somebody else out, we'll back down to five again, so that win, a loss. However, what I did earlier too, was I actually visited one of the money marts, and I spoke to the people that were using it, and I have to say that's for my, what really changed my opinion on it. The people that were there needed to use that service, plain and simple. For whatever reasons in their economic life, they needed to use that service, and I don't feel comfortable at all passing any bylaw or recommendation that would disenfranchise any members of our community. And I have a strong feeling that that's just not the right thing to do. Whether it's some people think that it cheapens the look of the street, well, they don't look too bad to me. So, and I happen to live on Esquimal Road. And anyway, so that's it, your worship and council, I won't support the motion. I believe that we should let the market deal with it, and we should also give consideration to the people that do use that service.
Thank you. Counselor Morrison.
Just in response to some of the concerns expressed, so first of all, we're not banning this type of business. I think that's a misrepresentation of this recommendation, this motion. What this motion says is that we currently have five already in existence, and certainly for a community of seventeen thousand people, five of the same type of business is five enough. So let's be clear as to what we're voting on. We're not disenfranchising any user groups, clientele that need to use these services. They'll have five to continue using. The issue is that we thought we had four, and we thought, well, four was enough, certainly four would be enough, and suddenly now there's a fifth. So what's to prevent a six? I don't even know how many different competitors there are in this type of industry, but we can talk about a little bit, and I apologize if I made disrespectful remarks about clientele, and that certainly wasn't my intention. Actually, my intention was more in defense of the clientele and the way that they get abused by this sort of business model. You know, you could talk, you could hear, listen to, read our most respected consumer advocates in this country, but probably more notable is Ralph Nader, and Ralph Nader points out very clearly, the American, very well-known advocate of consumer rights, that this business model actually exploits those people that this council has expressed that need this service. Actually, it has those people, it's part of their business model to ensure that those people aren't able to pay back their loan on time because they don't make a lot of money that way. Yes, the interest is high, but it's on an original small amount of money, so therefore the revenue into the business of these types of businesses is not where they make their money, and they certainly don't make their money from cash and checks. That's the draw to bring people in. But the business model is actually very specific. They go into areas where they know that there's a certain low income residency element, and they also specifically look for highly populated military bases. Well, guess what? That's Esquimal. Esquimal Road has a lot of lower income apartment buildings, and it has a huge military base with a very young, young family. with a very young, young family and young recruit population. That's their target. They draw them in from getting their cash, their checks cashed, and then they sell them on, "Well, you know what? You've got some money, but you can get a lot more money. It's not going to cost you very much. This is all, no questions asked, signed here, it's yours." Next thing you know, that next paycheck, it's going right, right back to the money lending store. And guess what? They're falling further and further behind on their loans, and their loans are defaulting. That's exactly what this business model costs for.
Counselor, can you speak to the recommendation?
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, let's be clear, I certainly do not want to cause any disrespect to the clientele of this service. I want to really be clear that we want to build a community where our citizens don't fall prey to these kind of businesses on a frequent basis and on a very vulnerable basis. And that is our community. That's who their target market is, the people that live and work in Esquimal. I'm going to actually, I mean, I'm not an idiot here, I can count votes, so I'm going to vote to table my own emotion. I think there is a possibility that with some more input, I will be attending the Chamber of Commerce meeting tomorrow night. I think with a little bit more research as to exactly what it is, this type, the business model is, and I'm willing to provide that research myself, circulate that to the council. But I will move to table this motion until, until our next meeting.
Do you want to have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
This is on table, right?
It's on table, yeah. Okay. None opposed, motion is good. Now move on to Esquimal Village Plan. Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, Your Worship. This report is just intended to provide a brief background on the history of this Esquimal Village Plan. I don't have you through the comments yet, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks very much. I'll open up. I'm very pleased to see this come forward. These recommendations to me are some of the things that are understanding and also help us deadline the process as we go forward. I would be very interested to hear from council members and be able to get along with this discussion. Counsel, if there is no discussion or concerns, then you do have a recommendation before you. Counselor Brain.
So to go back to the recommendations of MA3U to staff, the public meeting that is listed in number three of the recommendations, so is that for discussion on sale or retention, or is it more on the project as a whole?
I think it would be a bit of both, actually, because there seemed to be some misinformation previously when people came to the public hearing. And just in speaking to people since the public hearing at different events, I've heard some thoughts that aren't quite correct. So I think it would be worthwhile to have another information before the actual public hearing to clarify some of that information. And I think that one of the points that needs to be clarified is how council is going to dispose of this property, if they are going to dispose of it, or would they begin to work in partnership with them? Because I've heard from several people, there seems to be the assumption that there already is a developer that's been chosen, and that's not correct.
So, yeah, so I'm glad to hear that we'll talk, you know, clear up some of the misunderstandings because, I mean, there have been, you know, considerable meetings, open public meetings as well as open houses. So, I mean, the cost of having yet another public meeting is, you know, a bit frustrating, but it will help clear up some of the misconceptions, and that's a good thing.
Counselor Huddeman.
Thank you, Chair. I believe that it's a good thing that we have the discussions around the potential result of what happens with the land before the bylaws are actually discussed in a public hearing. So I'm in favor of that. I also have one question, and that's on page sixteen. And this was in relation to the loss of green space and loss of a playground. And so through the chair of staff, wasn't clear for me that that in fact was the case. Could you please clarify that point?
Well, the intention would be that the town square, which currently exists behind the library here, would be moved up to Esquimal Road. There wasn't plans actually to bring a playground up here as well, so I think that was a concern that some people had, is that the playground would actually be lost. You know, there's always the possibility of locating that playground equipment in another park, maybe even another park immediately across the street. But that children's playground wouldn't be relocated adjacent to Esquimal Road. That wasn't the intention of the public space that was going to be created there.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Hudson.
As colleagues at the table, I'm quite excited about opportunity for public to be more engaged in this project going forward and very supportive of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brain. I'll move the staff recommendation. Thank you, Sir Sanders.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Shinby.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you the staff. The recommendation that's being made or the ultimate motion that comes out of this, does that, that motion would include all four parts of the recommendation? Thank you.
Anything further? I just want to say that I'm certainly excited to have this come back on the table, and I know that as time goes on, and this is certainly one that we in Esquimal have spent a lot of time on, but a lot of time goes by, and so it is important to bring everybody back up onto the same page again and have an understanding of where we left off. The discussion around the site being retained by the township or sold or all of those, I think that that is going to require not only a partial discussion at one meeting, but may require more, and I think we as a council have to be aware of that. That is certainly an area where in the past I've heard, you know, when are you going to get to that discussion? That's, that's very important. We're supportive of the project. How does it go forward from there? And so I, I think that if we see from the community that they, they want and need to have discussion on that, that we make sure we provide that type. Anything further? Counselor Brain.
Just a quick question, and you may not be able to answer this through to staff. Kind of timelines that you're looking at if this motion goes forward? We could do next committee of the hall to talk about the land and site issues, I think. That, I think that's the first discussion that has to take place, and then from there, we can bring that information forward to the public meeting so that we can get some input on, on your discussions from that. So I think we start with the next committee of the hall.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Deen Nun, counsel, you have the recommendations one to four in front of you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Both none, motion is very unanimous. We now move on to the item five, development permit for A A D Esquimal Road. And Ms. Erst? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is a development permit. It's for forming character of a commercial establishment. The premises been there for a number of years, but there's a space that's unclosed that could be better utilized if it were enclosed, and that's what the applicant is requesting. The applicant is in the audience and has prepared a presentation for the committee.
Great. Just before we go on to the applicant, are there questions of staff at this time? Deen Nun, the applicant is in the room. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please come forward and address counsel.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counselor. My name is Doug Simons with the Department of Design, and I'm here with Mrs. Paulina Denix, the Vice President of Legere Properties, the owners of Glass Valentine at Esquimal and Ed Street. And we have before you quite a modest little proposal to enclose twenty-eight square meters of existing deck space on the upper level of building D property. And just to give you a bit of background, the property consists of four buildings. Building A and B are freestanding single-story commercial buildings. Building C is two-story, commercial on the main floor, parking on the upper level. And building D is commercial on the main floor, access ramps to parking on C, and a hundred and forty square meters of floor space. Our proposal is to enclose twenty-eight square meters of that hundred and forty. That enclosure would take in three glazed walls. Trying to keep in character with the existing building as much as possible, the enclosure would be matching glass and aluminum as much as possible to the existing building. We intend to extend the roof in the same standing seam, metal roofing color to match the details of the gutter, fascia, finishes, all to extend what is existing, carry the character through as much as possible. There's not, as we say, not a lot to it, it's pretty modest. There is a sign included in the development permit for the existing tenant, the Victoria Bridge Center. And the, the kind of mechanics of the thing, we're enclosing the space extending into the existing, so existing washrooms are already in place, existing mechanical systems are already in place, so we're not faulting very much of that. So really, that's pretty much all I can explain to you about it. I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simons, and I will open it up to Counsel Dan to ask questions. Counselor Morrison.
I'll simply move the recommendation to the questions for me.
Well, I'll just hold off. Thank you. We'll just get, see if there are questions. Counselor McConaughey.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I know the, the building, okay? There's a number of businesses that are in that facility there. Now, the upper is all been parking before. Is that parking staying, or is that parking being excluded to just strictly to bridge, or are they going to be still open to everybody?
It's open to everybody. There's no changes to the parking whatsoever. There's an existing deck along this part now that is completely underutilized. Has a couple of tables out there, but not that.
Yeah, copy of yours.
So.
Okay.
Counselor Huddeman, and then Counselor Hudson.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and providing your plans to us. How long would it take for you to put this in place? So suppose we approve this and it goes forward, how long would it actually take to do the work and have it completed?
I think that it would be complete once permits and the rest are in place in about three months, twelve weeks.
And so does that, that affect any of the tenants, then?
No, no. The, the reason for the whole enclosure is on behalf of the Victoria Bridge Club, that they have requested that the space be investigated, and if suitable, they would be more than happy to take it on.
Thank you. Counselor Hudson.
I'd also like to thank you for your presentation, and I really appreciate the design. I think it enhances the area and also increases floor space so that we have more opportunity for people to be involved and perhaps pay taxes. Kudos. Thank you.
Yes, I think this is a wonderful addition. It provides for a larger space, so should the Bridge Club not, you know, want to stay there forever. I am constantly being asked for a slightly larger space than we have available in our community, and in fact, I'm sure that this would add that amount of space that I've announced for several times in the past. So it, it's a wonderful spot. The view is incredible. You know, so the Bridge Club, I don't know if they're going to play bridge.
That's right.
But, but I'm, I'm pleased to see that, that the space that hasn't been really utilized well, that deck space, is going to be put to better use. My only question is around whether you're going to be doing things like recycling the windows for the new section, or?
Yes, the, the old windows that will be removed, that material will be recycled. We can't reuse the existing window frames. We want to put in double glazing in the new, and so the frames won't work. So we've got a little bit of an issue that we're getting the new frames powder coated to match the original, because there's an issue of finishes there.
So I hear you say you're going to go to double glaze, so are currently there single?
Yeah.
Thank you, because that was really the root of my question in terms of improving the efficiency. So really appreciate that, and I'm fully supportive. So unless there are other questions, I will entertain your motion now, Counselor Morrison.
So moved as.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Deen Nun, all those in favor? Thank you. You pass page one.
Thanks very much.
Now we move on to the section of the meeting, public question and comment period. And are there any members of the public that wish to speak? When you come forward, would you please give us your name and address? And as courtesy, you are given two minutes, but I'm usually generous on it unless I see a very long lineup. Tonight, we have lots of opportunity.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is John Burkush. My name is David, one-two-three-zero, old Esquimal Road. I'm a little confused by your process here, because I noticed on your council meeting agenda, it says public input excluding items which or have been the subject of a public hearing. And I see on your, okay, the whole agenda excluding items which are or have been the subject of a public hearing. And you passed a motion tonight that in fact, in point three, says you're going to have a public meeting, but you've also included in part D, a public hearing. Now, my comments would have been on one of the development of the town center, but I'm not sure that I can speak on it, given your motion, nor do I'm not sure that you can have a public meeting, since you've already proposed a public hearing. I also understand this recommendation to council. So my question is, can I, what can I talk about in terms of this tonight, given the motion you passed and given how you received your bylaw works?
Thank you. We, through earlier portion of this year, went through a process where we had to ask all those same questions. And in order to allow open and further discussion on village project, the process is that we must set another public hearing. So with that setting of public hearing, which we did early So with that setting of public hearing, which we did earlier in the summer, set it to come forward again in February of this year, we are, we were then allowed to open up the dialogue again.
So.
So you may speak about the issue of the village project. Yes?
Oh, Pauline, my first, I just got to make one quick question or comment, and that is, what's a village? And I looked up the definition in the local, in our local, in our dictionary at home, one of our dictionaries at home. And it says that a village is somewhat larger than a hamlet and smaller than a town. And I thought to myself, how many hamlets have I seen or slightly bigger than a hamlet that has a 12 or eight-story high-rise in it? So I think, first of all, you need to kind of rethink your title for your project. It's not a Squamaw village. It might be a Squamaw downtown, but the semantics of the word using every village is quite misleading. Second, I can tell you right now that you'll be hearing from us, because we are unultimately opposed to anything over four stories. We think that four stories is compatible with what is in the area already, and certainly compatible with the neighborhood, and certainly compatible with our front, with our front view. Some people say, "Nimby, not in my backyard." Our position is not in our front yard. And there's a little bit of difference there. So having said that, I'd also like to invite all of you who will get in touch to come to our house and see what the impact this proposal has on us very specifically, and not just us or our neighbors, so that you can understand very clearly why this project is not favored by us. In fact, we'll work to oppose it. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak? Other members of the public that wish to speak?
Ariel Dunn, 1293 Old Squamaw Road. And of course, I was here an hour ago. And I told you the police story, and Keith wasn't here, although I told everybody else what a great occasion I had with dealing with the police. And I want to publicly now thank Keith for the concern and the great care my mom got at 818 Wallaston Street. Thanks very much, and I'm happy to have Keith here. Listening to the council meeting and listening to what was said about up and down Squamaw Road, about cash shops or whatever we're going to call them, I'm very disappointed that it would not be unanimous to think that five is enough. Five is enough. We have banks. We have five cash machines. We have on the base. And I was at the public meeting where a gentleman came here discussing the latest one. And when it was asked why he came to Squamaw, he said it was because of the military base. Having gone to the military since 1953, that just makes me boil right over. And I would like really close consideration in thinking, it's not that we're stopping businesses. I agree with Tim. We've got enough. Enough is enough, and I think five's enough. And the third thing is, didn't know a thing about the Burke Bushes coming. I had no idea that John was going to talk about that. But nothing to do with a view or anything else, but my idea of a village is the same as their idea of a village. It has nothing to do with who owns the view, or what I can see or can't see. I just think that abominable, that we would think that a 12-story and an eight-story building is a village. And when I'm listening to coming up about the next committee of the hall, and we're going to be discussing the land, I would like everybody to think very carefully about letting a Squamaw land go to anybody except a Squamaw. Once that land's gone, the McDonald's is the greatest show of how we let our land go. We sold that piece of land to McDonald's. Never should have. We do not want to sell anymore of Squamaw land. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any further members of the public that wish to speak?
Hi, Corey Payne, 853 Rock Heights. I didn't come here planning to speak, but a lot of my friends, people in the community, are in favor of this plan, want this plan to go ahead. We are tired of the look of Squamaw Road, and we want development. Development's what's going to get us going forward. We're tired of being stagnated by rundown buildings and the clientele that run and operate a lot of these businesses. Sorry, I'm nervous. Right? So not everybody is against these buildings. A lot of us want them to go ahead. Developers do not build four-story buildings. There's no money in four-story buildings. They want to go eight or 12. Six is a bit of a push, right? It's even harder to do six now, right? We need development. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak? Other members of the public that wish to speak? Any other members of the public that wish to speak? Seeing none, I need motion for adjournment.
Madam Mayor, can I just make a comment before we adjourn? In terms of a lot of pass on kudos to staff. I've heard today from residents of Craig Flower how pleased they are with the bus shelter that's being put in by Arthen. And I'm aware that there have been several other modern bus shelters put in along that area. And it's very positive. And I'm also aware that Squamaw has been very fortunate in that we were able to negotiate with transit for additional bus shelters at no cost. And this is a positive thing. So through the C A O to engineering and other staff, thank you for the extra effort in getting us the shelters and having the shelters installed in a timely way.
Thank you. Do I have the motion now? Move. Thank you, and a second. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, everyone.